Okay, I think we call this June 24th regular commission meeting to order. Connie, please call the roll.
Who's the day?
Here.
Who's the Robertson?
Here.
Who's the Wester?
Here. Walt, these are for the pledge and then the cover prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is founded, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear Lord, we would ask for you to bless those individuals, those elected officials who are making wise decisions for their constituents. We would also ask for you to be with the entire Dayton region as they mourn the two people that were killed at the Dayton airshow. And we would also ask for you to be with our troops overseas as they work to protect our freedoms. In your name, amen. Okay, this morning we will start off with other comments.
My name's Jane Marshall and I live on Kederman Road in Lanier Township. And I am here just to, I don't know, plead my case might be the word. And what I want to talk about is the LEPC committee. And I will start by talking about your train script that I got this morning. And David, you asked Connie about if this was the committee that Phil Romeo was on.
Yeah, and that's not, I know, it's the Threats, Risks and Needs Committee.
Right, it's not that committee.
Yes, I know.
So I just wanted to clarify that. And then I have a question. Apparently somebody talked about it ahead of time because you had Resolution 396 already and you were going to vote on it. And I had asked Denise to be notified when you were going to talk about this. And I kept watching the agenda. And it wasn't on the agenda. And then you passed a resolution at the end of this. Just kind of curious how this resolution came to be, if this is the first time you talked about it out here. So that's question one.
I can answer that.
Thank you.
I got Charlie's request.
Yeah.
And I just had the ones that were coined the last time and the replacements placed on there. And then I had it numbered just on the chance that they were ready to act on it last week.
Okay, it couldn't wait.
They had not seen any of that, no, they had not talked about it. They didn't even know I had the resolution prepared, even how I have resolutions over here prepared in case they...
But usually not on somewhat controversial subjects. But yeah, I understand that.
Yeah.
But then the next question is, do you understand? I mean, Chris, you were there at that meeting and you voted to accept the slate of people that was on that board. And I got that with me this morning and my name's right there. So you voted for it there and you voted against having me on it here. Kind of curious why? Because a similar thing happened last year with Stone Cash. I asked him about being on this committee. I asked you about it at Fair. I get a different answer every time I talk to somebody up there. At last, well, in April, you were okay with it. What happened between then and last week that you weren't?
I had no problems making the slate. Quite frankly, I don't think you need to be on the committee, Jane.
And why?
Why?
Yeah.
Because of the comments that I get from people. Where in the committee that you've been on have been disrupted and not productive?
Disrupted? Well, I'll go back to these minutes. They talked about backpacks. You weren't there because Stone Cash was representative at the time. I'm the one that suggested backpacks. They were a hidden school.
You're still welcome to attend meetings.
I understand that. But I even asked you after the vote was taken. And I said, "You understand that I'm not on it and that I want to be on it?" And you said, "No, that was fine."
I understood that, yes.
Oh, okay. But I still don't understand the change. And you know, have anybody called me? I get all kinds of calls about all kinds of things.
That's good.
And I explained. Okay, I've heard that we need new blood. I mean, that was the excuse you gave me at the fair a couple of years ago. We need new blood. I've attended meetings for four years and haven't been on them. People, I've heard lately, that people will quit. Well, the attendance hasn't went down in the four years I've went there. In fact, we did new people on the board. You want to control the size of the board. You know, Charlie thinks it's a fine size. The board thinks it's fine size. I don't, I just really don't. I mean, it's okay if y'all don't like me. I can accept that. I got very broad shoulders.
That's not the reason.
That's not the reason?
No, I appreciate your volunteerism. I appreciate you serving on the Ohio Agrowomen with Rachel. Great job. You guys are two great women in agriculture in Breville County. That's not the reason?
I mean, that's the...
And I...
So David, if that's not the reason and you think I do a good job, then I'd ask you to reconsider the resolution.
Jane, I also know some people that don't serve on committees because you've been put on them before. Or I know people who have quit committees because you've been put on them before.
Well, then ask, you know, if you have a problem with me, if they have a problem with me, have them come see me. You know, I'll show the point to my attendance. My attendance at that committee not being on it is better than most of them. Or a lot of them that have certainly your previous commissioners better than. That was certain on there. It's not too big. The whole committee agreed that that's who we wanted to put on it. And I just have, I will continue to try to be on it. And I don't understand why I couldn't be notified. I couldn't, I don't understand why it wasn't on the agenda like it should be. So David, I guess, why, why don't you want to put me on the committee? I mean, Chris, I don't know that I've got much in the answer, but...
For one, just like the FCFC board, we talked for years about how big that board was and how we didn't want to grow it anymore, that there are certain people that needed to be on it. You were in another designation and we already have several others on that board.
Right, but who represents?
Some of the same things that Chris had brought up, that we have had people come to us and say, "Things are moving real smooth." And part of the reason is because there's no disruption.
Oh, well, you know, if...
And they point back a lot to you, Jane.
If disruption means that I state an opinion that might be different from the other people on the committee? Yeah, but I don't know. Do you want committees that rubber stamp everything? I don't. I don't think the community does. So that, you know, if it's rubber stamps you want, I'm not your person. And you know, you said that I stood up for the individual on the Threat, Risks, Needs Committee. I wanted him to come in here and be able to defend himself. That's what I wanted.
I'll remind you, we also received a letter from the city of Eaton asking what we were going to do about that individual.
And I'm not saying I wouldn't have voted to take him off at the point in time when he could come in. But I think everybody is due their time in front of whoever's making decisions about it. That's all I'm asking. That's all I was asking at the time. I don't understand it. I will continue to go. I will continue to make comments and make suggestions. But I really think it's ridiculous. You don't put me on a committee. I attend on a regular basis. That nobody stops going because I'm there. And if you go, you'll see that I ask questions and I bring good points up. Nobody brought up Sandy Hook or the Boston bombings or anything with regard... We have a huge pork festival here. We need to have people meet with Pork Festival, with Fair Board, with those kind of people to talk about what do you do when you see a backpack sitting someplace it shouldn't be? That's the kind of thing I talk about. If that's disruptive, guilty as charged. So I guess my question is, will you reconsider Resolution 396? And put me on the committee?
Chris, you serve on the committee. You serve on that committee with your pledge.
Okay, I hope everybody remembers this at the ballot.
Do you have any, do you have any comments?
Actually, I was just kind of, I'm learning about these committees. And when I look through the list of those on the committee, the only, I think, thing that jumps out at me is the representation of agriculture in the area. And the reason I bring that up is, one, because a lot of the chemicals that we use, and two, the amount of equipment that we have within our reach, like if the equipment were to be needed. In case of like a major disaster or something, it would be a good resource to be included in the committee. So that's just something I was thinking of when I looked at the list. But that's all I had this time.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. We appreciate that. Charlie?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry for being late.
Well, that's okay. We already prayed that right before we started.
We're blessing the rest of the party.
I'm sorry.
But we'll take the extra. Thank you.
That's all we want. The sheep for glitz and all. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Charlie. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, I will take the approval of vouchers.
No receipt of vouchers by signing.
And I'll second that.
Connie, please call the roll.
Who's the Robertson?
Yes.
Who's the Day?
Yes.
Who's the Wester?
Yes. Okay, today we'll have financial considerations, agreements and contracts. Meeting at 9:15 with Mindy Robbins. 11:30 approximately recess for lunch.
Mindy Robbins has been canceled.
Okay. Shorter meeting.
They won't have to make the trip on Friday, will they?
Not even possible.
Great, I have a couple of things to talk to you about. Can you stick around to my per meeting?
Sure.
Thanks. And once again, I do appreciate you guys serving on the Ohio Agrowomen Committee. That's great that you're bringing the conference, annual conference next year to Houston Woods. And we appreciate you guys representing Breville County on that. The volunteerism that both of you do is tremendous. I agree.
All I can say is I'm glad that I don't have to come before you get on that committee.
Okay. Well, Jane, there's some that you do well on and some that I can show that you...
Well, I would appreciate, I would appreciate you showing me that. You know, I'd be happy to come in and sit down. You can show me all the people that have complained to you about the committees that I've served on. I'd love to see that.
Well, some of those prefer to remain anonymous. But I guess I could go back on your mental health recovery work days and also the bicentennial committee.
Oh, well...
Oh, okay. As I said, you're...
No, I understand, yeah, those...
You set it up right there.
I've heard a lot about some of those, too.
Financial considerations. Consider approval of Resolution 404. From Pro Bay Port to Lottie Office Machines, $1,047.44. Move to approve of Resolution 404.
Second.
Connie, please call the roll.
Who's the Day?
Yes.
Who's the Robertson?
Yes.
Who's the Wester?
Yes. Consider approval of Resolution 405. A transfer to the engineer's office from the engineer line wage and salaries employees to wage and salaries employees. Those are two different numbers from 1-0-0-1-5 to 1-0-0-3-2. From the engineer line equipment. A debit of $65,408.35 to the engineer line contract projects. A credit of $35,408.35. And line materials, $30,000 for the total credit of $65,408.35.
Move to approve Resolution number 405.
And I'll second that.
Connie, please call the roll.
Who's the Robertson?
Yes.
Who's the Day?
Yes.
Who's the Wester?
Yes. Okay, no receipt of considered approval by signing an agreement. Copy of maintenance agreement with Lottie Office Machines Incorporated. $2,398.49 by prosecuting attorney.
Move to no receipt approved by signing.
Second.
Connie, please call the roll.
Who's the Day?
Yes.
Who's the Robertson?
Yes.
Who's the Wester?
Yes. No receipt of an executed agreement. 2013 litter collection and prevention grant agreement with Ohio EPA, $15,000 for recycling.
Move to no receipt of the executed agreement.
Connie, please call the roll.
Who's the Robertson?
Yes.
Who's the Day?
Yes.
Who's the Wester?
Yes. No receipt of considered approval by signing an agreement. March radio subscription agreement with Ohio Office of Information Technology. Multi-agency radio communication system program office. $1,200 EMA.
Move to no receipt approved by signing an agreement.
Connie, please call the roll.
Who's the Day?
Yes.
Who's the Robertson?
Yes.
Who's the Wester?
Yes. No receipt. Consider approval by signing an agreement. Product and services agreement with Centurion Sales Solutions and Fork Grade. $2,067.35, engineer's office.
Move to no receipt approved by signing.
Second.
Connie, please call the roll.
Who's the Robertson?
Yes.
Who's the Day?
Yes.
Who's the Wester?
Yes. No receipt of considered approval by signing an agreement. 329D excavator rental agreement with Ohio Cap. $36,519 lane built construction. Move to no receipt approved by signing.
Second.
Connie, please call the roll.
Who's the Day?
Yes.
Who's the Robertson?
Yes.
Who's the Wester?
No receipt of considered approval by signing an agreement. 725 articulated truck rental agreement with Ohio Cap. $34,034 lane built construction.
Move to no receipt approved by signing.
Second.
Connie, please call the roll.
Who's the Robertson?
Yes.
Who's the Day?
Yes.
Who's the Wester?
Yes. No receipt of considered approval by signing an agreement. Wellness program master agreement with Interactive Health Commission Office. Move to no receipt approved by signing an agreement. Connie, you want to comment about Connie?
They're helping with our biometric screening and health assessment in September. They will also be exploring any other seminars, wellness seminars for the employees that would, if there are any expenses, would fall under the Bureau of Workers Conference that we were awarded. But as for the biometric screening and the health assessment, there's no charge with accounting on that.
So my plans to be sad in September. Until we help out the state.
That'll be done in September.
That'll be done in September. Robinson and I are going to stay the date.
Well, thanks for all your work on that, Connie. We appreciate it. Would you please call the roll?
Who's the Day?
Yes.
Who's the Robertson?
Yes.
Who's the Wester? I can give you a little update on the moving forward project. Couple of days to my time last week. Out of the 10 houses, I believe we have seven down. I believe out of the seven, four are completely done. And three will be completed today and tomorrow. So, and of course, we go, round one has to be done by the end of this week. So, and I foresee that happening in the next couple of days. The remaining houses will be down. And being removed, strawled and seeded, well, bred and seeded and strawled.
How many do we have for round two?
Right now, we're looking at 12. I've got my certificate, my certificate titles back and I have four problems, four certificates that aren't clean. So I'm looking at eight right now. And I have placed phone calls to the four to hopefully get some things cleared up upstairs so we can receive the post four. I am also placing phone calls to several other people that's came in and has provided us with contact information for round three. David, I have the minutes here, though.
Take an approval of the minutes.
No receipt. Consider approval by signing generalization, no receipt. See your recordation, both. As the official minutes folded June 19, 2013, regular session meeting.
Second.
Connie, please call the roll.
Who's the Day?
Yes.
Who's the Robertson?
Yes.
Who's the Wester? And then I do have one additional item. And that is two vouchers made up to pro grade for the West Alexandria CEG project in the amount of $82,879.97. That is voucher number 4461 and 4462.
We need to move, move to no receipt approved by signing. I move to no receipt approved by signing. Vouchers.
The vouchers, the two vouchers.
Two vouchers, she just read.
And I'll second that.
Connie, please call the roll.
Who's the Robertson?
Yes.
Who's the Wester?
Yes.
Who's the Day? We did, if you remember, last week, I'm not certain if it was Monday or Wednesday, when we made the appointment of Eric. Probably Al Bolster. Rita Daly contacted me, I think it must have been Thursday, saying that since Eric lives, apparently he lives out of the county and this appointment is for individuals that live in the county. And apparently this appointment needs to come from the health department. So I'm not certain. I mean, they had mentioned Roger McCamell's name, but I'm not certain Roger is arrested and serving on this board, on this, what you call it, some housing authority board. So I will be placing a call to Rita. See how, we're going to have to rescind our resolution and we'll have to make another appointment. But if that is the case, that Roger isn't arrested, we need to find someone that is arrested and serving in the health department.
We need to rescind that?
I don't have the number for me, but unless it's in the minutes that I just handed you, if you get it Wednesday. I'm not certain if you get it Wednesday or last Monday. Regardless, I can go out here and pull one. I thought you'd get it.
I don't think so.
Did you share any sign?
I think, yes, I think so.
It is Resolution number 388.
Move to rescind Resolution 388.
Second.
Connie, please call the roll.
Who's the Day?
Yes.
Who's the Robertson?
Yes.
Who's the Wester?
So is Eric going to submit somebody else to us or...
I don't know, I don't, I don't believe it's Eric that's suggesting. Well, Rita's the one I'm going to deal with. I think Rita...
A recommendation needs to come from the health department.
Yes. Yeah, assessment comes from the health department. I'm not certain how and why Rita gave us a recommendation. But that's my understanding. It needs to be a representative from the health department. I've always dealt with Melissa Wallace in the past.
Well, let's see, talk to Eric and get your recommendation of somebody else.
No, Al, Rita, no, I'll be talking to Eric.
Was Melissa one of the seven before?
Mm-hmm.
Does her name, the record, not one of the seven?
That's Eric. He's one of the downtown.
I'm sorry, I don't know his name.
He lives out of the county.
What was his name?
Bolster, B-A-L-S-T-E-R. And maybe you were gone the day you came in. I know you came in, I know Melissa were riding in. I wasn't able to meet him because I was unavailable. Maybe you were out that day.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But he didn't come to meet. I believe David and...
Yeah, I sent him a couple of times.
I believe that's all I have.
Okay. Well, thanks to you and the committee for the move in Ohio forward. It looks like it's going very well. Phase two is getting ready to come together. Then we'll be having phase three and that should pretty much end it for what the money we've got. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. I talked to a few counties when I was in Columbus on Friday at a course meeting. Some of them aren't going quite as smooth as others because they've been doing their homework on the firm.
Well, yeah, we got on too quickly because they're on needles. But the second and third round should be relatively quicker because we got everything ironed out there in the first round, so...
I just talked to a couple of counties that have a few hiccups because they didn't get everything right. They've got things on hold. It sounded like they didn't work out.
Yeah, it sounds like what Brenda White said about a month ago, that other counties are using the template that Breville County sort of came up with to do their programs. So, once again, thanks to the committee for bringing that to you. Chris, do you have anything else?
Not at this time.
Yes? I have some grapes for wine.
The grape was good. I was just going to say, Chris got us a garlic purple. Harder than should have been. I hit under a tree until it was time for us, the car to move.
Car didn't hose you down?
No, they shouldn't, actually. But it was good. A lot of people, yeah, I guess. It's kind of small, a good combination. But it was good, it was nice. But yeah, thanks again to your friends and the cars. We were behind the horses, so it was glad we didn't have to walk. We were directly, but there was a nice, one of those really, really old cars. What year was it?
'55.
Beautiful car. Was directly behind the horses and he kept dodging. It was, that was a good time.
Let me see, about the only thing I have is, you know, with NACO, Denise, it's probably been four years ago, Chris, when we started prescription drug discount program for the uninsured or underinsured. And recently, especially when I went to Washington, we found out about the dental discount program that gives up to between 5% and 50% reduction for those who are uninsured. And it's a really good program. I'm still, I'm still researching that to make sure because even the prescription drug, we didn't have really any more time upfront. So I sort of took that under my wing. And anybody called me that had a problem. The same will probably happen with the dental. But also with our trying to help Breville County residents with their medical needs... But also with our trying to help Rebel County residents with their medical needs, obviously the last 10, 15, 20 years, we've come a long way with the medical doctors up at the Y and other doctors that have come into the community with Reed and Kettering and everything. But we, the 10 acres right next to the Y, we had given them to a Well to Youth Foundation and Judge Deuce for an urgent medical care center. And I just wanted to make sure all three of us are on board that we do support an urgent medical care center here in the county. I know some would like a hospital and maybe someday a hospital will come. The best people who know that are the doctors and the administrators who put up hospitals. But even urgent care would be so beneficial for this county and I'm not sure when their funding will move, but I know that's what the 10 acres would give for. And I just want to make sure that all three of us are in agreement that we would like a senior care center brought here to the county.
Yeah, I know they're currently doing an addition to the existing facility as we speak. And I know, you know, the 10 acres, that's a good intent. I just don't get a bit of the timeframe and what. Last time I talked to the judge and a couple of other folks from Kettering, they were trying to evaluate what the most urgent need was, so I don't know what they come up with. I know they are currently looking at some, I'm looking for, I'm just looking at, I think we need a care facility in the county. Obviously, we're, seniors and things of that nature, so...
Well, it prevents, you know, having to drive to somewhere else and we can get care quicker and sooner. And I know that, you know, it could be coming sooner than later, but I think we just need to make sure that we support that kind of a venture and anything we can do to encourage that or, you know, talk with the judge or the youth foundation or the doctors up there, I think it would be good perspective.
I know the doctors are eager to get something included. And like I said, they're trying to identify the needs. The last time I talked to them, what they felt would be the biggest bank, you know, for the county, so I don't know what direction they're leaning to.
Okay.
You know, we are the fastest growing medical facility. Like we have a Y area than any of the other counties that have, have the same type of facility.
Same setup.
Right, I read that in paper that we are the fastest growing medical, medical portion of that facility.
Great.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, that's all I had. Is there anything else, Connie?
I'm having...
No other meetings?
No.
Jeff, thanks just for us to get down here and get out of here. It's all under advisement.
You're good, Jen.
The meeting is comfortable.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wester?
Yes.